I declare the meeting open. I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional club meetings, the land we're meeting on tonight, the Savant Secretary of the Parks and the President. And also remind everyone that tonight's meeting is being audio visually recorded and will be available on Clarence's website later in the week. Item one, apologies. Questions for New York's Bibles, for hotel and hospitality, primary school, and everything else. As usual, we're convened as a special council meeting, a standing authority meeting, and discussing needs to invite recitations and delegations. The operative blue side, we have four speakers, three representatives and one applicant. Each speaker will have three minutes each to present their case, and then there's an opportunity to interact with the alderman. The alderman can ask questions, seek clarification, or whatever, so there's extra time available for that after three minutes. General Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Mr. Michael Gaird of Cambridge Road, who wishes to address counsel respect to this matter.
Yes, we've got three representatives and one applicant, and in the interest of procedural fairness, we've invited the applicant to come up as the fourth speaker. General Manager.
I think historically, we've always had the proponents as last, but I'm not sure what the meeting...
We've never done that previously.
The meeting procedure rules live...
Tonight's draw your attention also that the mayor may make determination on the preferred invitations based on procedural fairness considerations. That's also in the policy. I apologise for that, but it is actually in the policy.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. Don't get me wrong, we want something built on the site, and what the council has completed so far is excellent. We now have a proposal for a five-storey hotel on the Dingey Shed site, which is acceptable. Worried, however, an additional five-story building will be built over the road from our home off an already very narrow footpath which will completely overwhelm us. This proposed building has a maximum height of 13.6 metres off the ground level. A telegraph pole is 6.6 metres above the ground. You are being asked to approve an 83-metre building 13.6 metres above road level, so more than two telegraph poles high. Contrary to what the council planners have stated in their recommendation, we do not have 25 metres and four-lane carriage way of road separating us, but just 20 metres, which is made up of four lengths of traffic and footpaths. Three wood sticks count in the town plan's report: buffer, barrier, and visual screening. All of this goes against what Lee Woolley recommended in his 2006 Hobart Urban Design Principles project report, where he talks about elevation density, which should be intrinsic to this development and all the way up to Weyly Flora Park. These buildings do not in any way meet the acceptable solution of two stories. So you have been asked to override what the strategy plan, developed in consultation with the community over a long period of time, recommended for this site. These days, everyone wants more. As this application shows, the extending out over the water, the service department's being built over the right-of-way, and levels three, four, and five extending to the edge of the footpath. But I remind the alderman, you have the power to approve, seek amendment, or recheck this current application. Once these buildings are in place, there will be no going back, and unlike Mike Baird and his Greyhound band, you will not be able to back down and reverse the decision. All of our objections have been dismissed by council planners as unimportant. However, when you are retired and you spend the major part of your day in the personal space of your home and garden, they are important considerations for us. Indeed, I've been unable to find anything similar approved in the Hobart or surrounding council areas where a proposed building has affected a residential area in its way. As you might gather, when I believe that an injustice is occurring, I will not give in easily, and I sincerely believe the request for Building Two to have four or five stories in such a long building with no breaks and no setback is in the wrong, and I hope you have the courage to agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaird. Are you able to take some questions and provide clarification, Andy Dawson, to keep my chair to ask for it now? Yes, please. Are there any questions? Alderman James.
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Gaird, are you aware in the Clarence interim planning scheme, there is a definition of amenity? The amenity in that definition means in relation to a locality, place, or building, any quality, condition, or factor that makes it or contributes to making the locality, place, or building harmonious, pleasant, or enjoyable. That's the definition.
That is.
And you're probably aware of that.
I'm well aware of that.
Yes.
And that's why I am so against the height of this building. You've... I just can't understand why a building that is 20 metres high has to have the ground level height 6.2... I just want to check this, because I don't want to get it wrong. 6.15 metres high, then the first level is 3.15, so the ground level is actually double the first level. The second level, which is the first level of a service department, which is 3.2 metres, the third level 3.72 metres. And has anyone ever had a roof that is 3.8 metres high? I don't think so.
I can ask the second question. The second question I have, Mr. Gaird, is in relation to what would you see as a better alternative for the Building Two that abuts Cambridge Road?
Well, I really, I fail to understand whether the Kangaroo Plan has got the overall authority, or the Clarence interim scheme report of 2015 has got the overall authority. Because if you go to the Clarence interim scheme authority plan, the setback off Cambridge Road is supposed to be six metres. It doesn't say one side of the road can abut the footpath and the other side has to be six metres from the footpath. It says six metres for all of Clarence Street and all of Cambridge Road. Just in regards, if I can just give you these figures, because we went out and measured them this morning, and the Clarence Building, Clarence Street Building, I should say, has a distance of about 2.9 metres from the road edge to the building. The key building is 4.1 metres, extending out to about seven metres. And even the new units down on Cambridge Road in Kangaroo Bay itself, the measurement between the edge of the footpath and the building is approximately 4.9 metres. So quite considerably more, and I'm not sure if everybody realises this, that that footpath on Kangaroo, on Cambridge Road, which this is going to abut, is only 1.6 metres wide. It is a very narrow footpath. And the first level, yes, it's going to have a bit of setback and a bit of garden, but then the second, third, fourth, and however many stories they have in the building, is going to be 1.6 metres from the road. Pretty close. Can I just add one more? No, it's okay. I was just going to say that there was a chap who used to serve a petrol in the 60s, England's darn called Bruscula, and I tell you what, he was there for the battle, and he would not have approved this as it currently is. The council have bent over backwards, and I admire the council for doing that, bent over backwards to help the developer get this application through, because it doesn't matter what objection we have, all of a sudden the objection is overcome.
I will take that as an addendum to your last answer.
Mr. Mayor, I suppose we're trying to order the speakers in terms of procedural fairness as well, but I would ask Mr. Robert Morris Dunn, the speaker next, please.
Is that we both share the answer?
Yes, correct. Just my comment, Mr. Morris Dunn has his planning consultant with him, so he tends to responding to questions. Mr. Mayor, appropriate with you, both are able to respond to questions.
That's fine. We're in the interest of the facts here, Alderman James, and I think it's quite appropriate that we are best informed as we can be before we consider a matter.
I apologise.
Yes.
Well, we have a very, very brief introduction. The council and ourselves, and I represent Hutt Development, first put in the expression of interest for the project, have been on quite a long evolution, if that's the right word for it, with regard to this project. And a very other significant player involved in the exercise has been the office of the coordinator general and in the state government. Because what we have here is not just a self-commercial development, although that's an aspect to it, it's also a very, very significant contribution to the training of the future of our whole tourism industry. And in fact, that is the primary goal of the whole development. In fact, it is the whole development that has been looked at in that sense. And the people that we are now working with in conjunction with the state government, it is about providing a facility that would be of a national standard and grow to be of an international standard for the training of the whole of the tourism industry going forward in this state. And as it's going to be the first in Australia, it's going to be the sort of, if you like, benchmark against which others measure. So it's not just a hotel with a dead-end at the back or whatever. The whole lot is an integrated facility, and we've tried to actually make that as coherent as we can within the terms of the planning scheme. And what we've also tried to do is create an iconic development of which Clarence can be proud of. So the building out the back that has been discussed, in fact, in fairness, if you measure the heights from Clarence Road, it is not 20 metres high. The apparent height is much lower than that. Yes, about a third of the building is below the Clarence Road line. Also, I'd like to comment that there is a glass facade to Cambridge Road, and that we will be... This will probably be the most heavily vegetated building ever constructed in Tasmania. So the quality of vegetation that is going to be going into this building is going to be a very, very significant... I think you could actually describe these buildings as sort of, yeah, the whole design. So what we're actually creating to Cambridge Road is a sort of a glass facade behind which will be a very, very substantial three-story sort of terrace garden. And I think the outlook will be a very, very pleasant one. That's a highly subjective view. I'm interested in what Lee Woolley has to say, because as has been alluded, it has been, the proposal will provide a distinctive focus and architectural features to extend it. Okay, okay. Look, it's interesting that the independent review people that have been asked to look at this and who also made the council guidelines are supportive of the whole idea. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm interested, Robert Morris Dunn, about the terminology that Mr. Woolley uses in his submission, inasmuch as he says, "The developer proposal provides a considered response to the deserving design principles and site development intentions for Kangaroo Bay." In the preceding paragraph, it does say, and I quote, "The Kangaroo Bay Urban Design Strategy and Concept Plan, Master Plan, provided the basis for formulating the scheme provisions, and as such, do not hold any statutory weight in relation in assessing this development application." So in his comments, Mr. Woolley makes that comment about a considered response to the urban design principles. But then, on the other hand, there is no statutory provision for saying what is the height of that building. Can you respond to that?
In general terms, what we've tried to do, in the mapping of both buildings, has been balanced out to try and create a totality. The functional needs of this training facility and hotel is the sort of bulk that we have just put there. What we've tried to do is to sort of use that bulk as possible as we can. So we've balanced things out to sort of try and give an overall impression. We haven't wanted to build a tower, we might want to build a tower. We've tried to judge the land and the slant of the land to do, and just make a better effort we can. Do you want to say anything, how to start the planning stuff?
Just only a question to your question, the difference between urban design strategy and planning scheme. Lee Woolley is correct to say that the planning scheme takes weight over the urban design strategy. The particular purpose I'm that you mean is the standard, and you can see the council have brought that effect. Urban design strategy might be, at the end of the day, some vision for the future that was given, but it isn't how it translates to law. As far as the scheme is concerned, the Chicago purpose sign is the law. And in relation to Gaird's comments, there is no setback on it to Cambridge Road, because the Chicago purpose sign overrides the other standards relating to the street. It might apply to his side or the other sites, but not to the particular one.
I shouldn't say "architectural response," because in section 35, 4.2 of the OFCIP's Clarence interim planning scheme, it says under D, "Increased height of building in the marina and walk areas may can be considered where the development incorporates a scale and architectural response that is cognizant of its location and visual importance in the bay and surrounds." What constitutes an architectural response? Because it seems to me that you could build a seven-story building in the walk zone, and if it was of architectural response and is cognizant of its location and visual importance in the bay and surrounds, then it falls with its architectural response terminology. So is it possible, if the building, and we take, let's take the Bellry Building, it's about eight stories, if that was of an architectural response, you know, the design was of that height, but it had a sort of a different shape and style, could it be built in the walk area and still meet that particular terminology of architectural response?
Hardly objective, but I believe we have tried to balance out all those different particular things and create a sort of an iconic building that did respond, complex to respond to all the needs of all the different people. Which has been getting worked through the council offices and sort of... Yes, we want to actually give something that, at the end of the day, is a very significant sort of positive contribution to Clarence, and hoping this will be a benchmark for the future, as far as the iconic sort of developments on this part of the river. We think we can do the right thing. We've tried to balance that out accordingly. We've got a bench building and we've got a backdrop building, and we've tried to balance the effects of the two.
My, Mr. Mayor, third question is, is it five stories or four on Building Two?
Yes.
As far as stories go, it's really, it's a four-story building with a terrace. That's as far as the definitions go. The fact that the roof has a cover over it, doesn't necessarily make the roof under the planning scheme, doesn't make it story as defined. It would have to be an enclosed floor, two-story.
Excellent. Alderman James.
Mayor, just for the purpose of addressing this meeting, could Mr. Morris Dunn please explain why floor one is 6.1 metres high?
It's a two-story atrium in one part, but it's only two stories. The, the, it's only two metres high, or thereabouts, the construction, yes.
There's only a portion of the building that's square, the rest of the building has...
You actually said that the glass facade stroke vegetation, we'll take it on to Clarence Street, is going to have a pleasant outlook. A pleasant outlook for whom? Do you mean the residents across the road?
Yes, and also from the guests saying, in the building, it's actually moving through an environment that's very, very sleepy. It's not, last thing I want to try and create, it actually for the wood corridor, it's the play atrium, and it's a very, very heavily vegetated play atrium over a number of levels. And created, rooted, rooted garden, and sort of, I don't think, have these, have these gardens that are heavily planted on that, that's possible.
Did you have actually any interaction with the surrounding residents in relation to the design of the building?
Not really, no. I think that's public comment. We were sort of there, there had been an awful lot of sort of discussion about, sort of, through council with, with the sort of other people, like the Bellary Yacht Club and sort of all of that. But the whole civic commonard side of things was the name of the truck. But, but, look, you can't do everything to everyone, I'd first admit that. We've tried to balance out all the, all the different values that we could, in order to deliver something that I think is going to be, you know, a very, very significant overall setting. The state, not, not set the stats. It's just actually, this one, this one's got sort of very, very positive implications, why not, of the ball. I'm involved in, in sort of tourism development and other parts of the state. This will provide the people to actually learn to use and man that facility if they're building the property. It has to be out of staff, certainly, so this will actually do that.
I'd like to ask you, if it comes to the allocation of a building on Cambridge Road, when you actually, in your survey of the area, was there an opportunity to not really locate on Cambridge Road, but on the other side, more towards Rodney and Chip Cottage in that area? And if there was, or is there, or was there any opportunity, or is there...
That is the only, that, we had to speak within the time limit given, and that, yes, we had that concern.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe the only time I can ask this question, but you've, you've gone to hospitality training school, I understand that. Not far away is the Rose College. Now, I cannot say, and I don't know if it was ever discussed, that some of the college be built on and have that training school there, because it's only a couple hundred metres away. It would have dropped the height of that building, I believe, by probably a story, and the complaints I get about height, I believe, would have been alleviated. Was that ever discussed?
It is, it is a house training facility. The school and the hotel are literally intertwined because the activities are not remote. For that very reason, they, a lot of the actual things that go on, the teaching will be going on within the hotel, both sides of the hotel. So it's not like moving some of them to another sort of teaching facility. That, for that, you need to actually go to the tapes, people divided out, but the whole thing is with it is a complete complex that's bound up together.
I appreciate that, but one of the numbers of students, I just find it hard to believe that all those students are going to be working at one time in the hotel, and that's what I'm saying.
They will be, they will be going out to other hotels with you, and partly, it is a, it is a very sophisticated sort of curriculum system. So they won't be going elsewhere to be taught in the core teaching thing, they'll be going out to other hotels.
I appreciate that, and I think that's what we were told in the workshop, but what I'm saying, it could have actually been, the actual training itself could have actually been a couple hundred metres away from Rodney College, I believe, and that building could have been dropped in.
It wasn't our fault.
No, no, I understand that, but I did, I... Thank you, Mayor.
I'll be. Alderman James.
So, Mr. Morris Dunn, you effectively are telling us that this overall proposal to the buyer, that this is the only, this is the optimum design and consideration for the whole project to buy.
Viable is a difficult word, that depends what you're talking about. It's not commercially, it's not about affordability, it's about the running of this facility from an educational perspective. That is mine understanding from Justin Tate, who were involved in the exercise with the state government before we got involved. And so the premier has actually made an agreement with educators a long, long before, or they were actually, so who were given a break. From that respect, yes, that is what has worked out.
Mr. Morris Dunn, one of the issues that's been raised in representations, the loss of views and...
Firstly, in relation to loss of views from Cambridge Road, I'm being a little blunt by saying they're not regarded as an amenity at law by the tribunal. So if it's a matter... by saying they're not regarded as an amenity at law by the tribunal, so if it's a matter of whether one could approve or refuse something on the basis of loss of view to a residence across the road from a residence to a, effectively a commercial zone, that has a discretion on height above anything above two stories, the answer is no, loss of view is not protected. It's not regarded as an amenity in terms of enjoyment of the property, and I know the amenity definition was quoted before. View, I used to work a long time ago, and I didn't have grey hair, in, in North Sydney Council, or the council, and this issue came up many, many times at law in Australia, and it's come up many, many times since. A view has to be bought, a view has to be owned, it is considered a commercial advantage by the law rather than an amenity. So, for example, in North Sydney, people would impose covenant restrictions on the height of the site across for them to say, well, you know, you can't build over this height, and it's fitting on the title, the covenants of title control, and they would pay a lot of money to protect their view and to have that covenant on that title. Now, that is how views are protected, they are not protected at law through the planning instrument, because they are not considered an amenity in the way that sunlight or privacy are considered an amenity issue. Visual bulk is considered an amenity issue, that is when something is right up, literally, you know, if it was right in the garden, that would be an issue. But we have a physical separation here of the road, pavements, we have an expectation in a commercial sign of something that was going to go along there. If you recall in the scheme, it talks about having activity on the Cambridge Road frontage, which would imply that it was at least anticipating a one or two story building fronting Cambridge Road, because it talks about activity and having, you know, shops and various other things along that way. So if you go along those lines, a two story building on that side of Cambridge Road would block the view anyway. This is a three story with roof terrace, I think the views are already gone with a two story building from my perspective.
Just, thank you. Just some consideration for me would be in looking at, in looking at gaining some more visual amenities along roadway, which isn't a planning requirement, however, the pictures that are presented in the report, for me, I wondered if there was an ability for view lines to be incorporated in the actual development plan. They're not here in the report that we've been given, but I'll leave that to you to consider, because looking at the pictures, and I'm, I have only got one angle, I'll leave it to you, but I, I thought maybe the trees could be moved off to the right of the floor, and also if there was a gap between the building, whether that could be highlighted in some way.
I don't, this isn't actually page numbered, it's the plan on your, first of all, plan on your agenda, the back. Basically, there is a full landscape strip along building from the foyer down, which will be a planted landscape strip before the pavement as well, so there, there is that proposed, so the only building that abuts right on to the pavement level is a subsection that relates to the teaching part of the facility. The rest of it is landscaped, and as Robert has indicated, it has the double landscaping of a translucent wall with, with a garden inside, literally as well.
However, when it comes back to that other section...
This is not delayed.
No, no. No, it was just an added consideration to move trees for a view line, thank you.
I think they're letting go of questions, thank you, Mr. Robert Morris, now, again, and, uh, gentlemen.
Next speaker is the mayor, is Verity Cooter. Cambridge Road, which also addressed council and respective medicals.
Um, just to start with, we're not anti the proposal, it's a quality hotel and a training school. Our personal concerns relate to the height, the domination by size and the commercial domination, and those effects of the amenity prior to the lack of effective historical aspects of our home, but also the wider village and Kangaroo Bay areas, the glare and the parking, and noise. Addressing the height or the domination in the context of the hotel training school, focused on its core uses, will assist in resolving many of those issues. The proposal incorporates non-core uses through inclusion of commercial tenancy, which is not necessary for the development to go ahead. Their removal, together with perhaps some of the resident and reduction in the number of rooms, delivers the opportunity to remove at least one floor and perhaps two adjacent to our property, with the gradual step up in built form to height similar to those above and into the very village. The student cafe is unnecessary, there are numerous existing and substantial potential for other sites with such use elsewhere, though too with many other proposed commercial tendencies. Their removal supports other local businesses, further future business development opportunities, and the overall vision for the area as an area for the open movement of people throughout the area. The introduction of commercial tenancy also allows for better potential business domination by stealth. A caveat should be placed on the operation of the hotel and training school. Removal of the commercial property, uh, tenancies allows height and dominance reductions with all on benefits to parking, other business development, and the overall historical and other natural characters of the area.
Those matters to occur, that you've suggested about the reduction in the height and the commercial activities, it would probably require new development. Question is, question is, the height of the building, is that one of the key aspects? If you're trying to have a priority list and those things, would you say that the Building Two on Cambridge Road is one of the key factors that is making this proposal not go for you?
Absolutely.
Could you just explain that?
We, we're right next door, we're on the side of the half way with the Olympic Road, and some of the plans are very hard to view, but it would appear that the training school was 12, 11, 12 metres above our natural, our existing roof line, and some 17 metres above our outdoor living area.
Just like the same, Mr. Mayor, we've heard from Mr. Morris and Nun describing the fact that this concept, this development, this proposal, and the design to have it virtually, has been done considering all of the, the need to embrace all of the concepts. And I think a number of the things that you have just mentioned that you don't need in this development are actually the key things that make it viable for a developer, and that, that is a problem, because there is all very well to have the very needs met, but there is also other things that have to be developed off that which will make the whole concept viable. And the concept, no, my question is, do you understand that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll come up with a compromise for everybody.
The officer's report says that in relation to issues of ownership and privacy, they recommend a condition being placed on the development, that, that the development of screening of the areas that may cause harm to the children. Do you think that there is a, a screening solution that may be acceptable to you that will address your concerns?
Certainly, it needs to be solid, but the problem is that the original part of the home is confusing, so a lot of it, we don't have opaque windows and things like that at the moment, to try and give us, in that southern wall of our home, so it's going to be faster in the living area, which is bigger, so evergreen trees, we've got, we might have the lighting, but also some of the green trees, screening is great.
My question, Mr. Mayor, the, um, is your concern about overlooking to areas inside your house or into private open spaces as well?
Private open space in the backyard, or...
Last speaker is the mayor, Lindsay McDougal, from the Bell Reed Yacht Club. Thank you. Well, I apologise for the inconvenience of our two senior officers, the Congo and Ross, who are sadly jobless, so you've got me unfortunately. I'm a life member of the Bell Reed Yacht Club, so I've been in it for over thirty years, I've served in most of the roles there, now I'm a resident of the club. I represent in excess of ninety members of the BYC, the majority of home residents of Karen's. We are a potentially integral part of Bell Reed, while governments, councils, and developers come and go, we're here for long term and recently celebrated by the Ninety. We've cooperated fully over the pleading changes required to facilitate development, but there has been no direct consultation with these policy or designs or developers in this proposal, and much of the information has been from press releases up to this point. Club supports appropriate development with a preset, and the main concerns relate to traffic management, car parking, BYC access, and the shared sidewalk park. We please hope some of these have been partially addressed. We already have issues of car park being used by local businesses and employees because there is no provision of open parking in the Bell Reed Village area. A variety of methods are used by the proponent and council traffic engineers, yet appears from the council report the scheme could provide perhaps two hundred and forty three spaces, while proponent identified requirements under the scheme for hundred and ninety-two spaces, whichever figures are used as a substantial shortfall. Council traffic engineers have heavily discounted the requirement and still identify the efficiency of vacant space, which is on this basis that council has recommended, to seek eight hundred and forty thousand cash contributions in lieu. Without a resolution to the shortfall, the club will be further impacted. Cash in lieu does not recommend a solution to the parking problem, and BYC seeks a decision on when and where funds are used to provide the parking shortfall privately approved. BYC access, it's no longer the out wide proposed access to the facility and BYC will be, the acting has indicated agreement to remove the ten spaces adjacent to the property, the BYC supports this proposal if it results in separation of vehicles from pedestrians and cyclists. Cyclists currently choose the shortest route of the BYC and beyond. This indicates that dedicating a side path or side route through the Bell Reed is required, and a more direct route. Traffic management plan in this DA also did not acknowledge traffic moves to and from the BYC, it is still a long term aim of the BYC to close entry access and use Cambridge, Kangaroo Bay Drive as their own access, as provided for in the scheme.
Yeah, perhaps through the process of asking questions or clarification, you can expand as required.
Two questions, Mr. Mayor. The first question is in relation to parking. I understand there was a working party established over the years which the Yacht Club was a member of, and, and I thought there was some discussion about some plan for a car park, a multi-story car park, is that at all arisen in the, or has it just...
Yes, yes, well, there has been mention of a multi-story car park, actually, knowing about, how the city...
Page forty-nine of the officer's report, it refers to mask requirements, and in the comment section of this, it says that in relation to items one and five, the Worf does not form part of the application, so obviously it's not a matter. But in relation to the other items, two and three, it refers to amongst other things, can masks be advised if the buffer zone under the roof and which extends two metres is planned as a no medication zone? Has your group, sort of, had discussions in relation to this, or is it a matter that can be easily resolved and it's not a matter that can be...
Thank you, sorry. It remains a concern of ours that this is not resolved and we would like a solution and a solution through consultation with the mask, and we do have the only thing of how the patient possibly...
Also in question, in item three, in the mask requirements, can a distance from the buffer zone to the existing BYC marina be given? Is essentially existing BYC marina tenants are provided with a safe distance to be able to maneuver this in and out of their pens, and also to other birds to the south shore of the marina? Is that another matter that would need to be a condition before this approval is given, or is that, can that come later after this is approved?
If I may, we do have development plans for the marina, and they're quite substantial, and we would like to get, get ahead with it. In the meantime, the designers have Australian things, rocks and small things, and passing lanes and so forth, that have been put on the teams, and we expect they won't be adhered to. We have already decreased the size of the footprint on our plans for the extension of the marina, at council's request, to allow this development to go ahead, so we think we've done our bit. Hopefully, we, it has reduced the size of the maintenance, which reduces the commercial load blocking of what we're trying to do, but we think we can still live with it. The main effect is going to be on our parking, we require additional parking in the vision of ground birds, and that's planned to be put on the other half of that gravel area, which is adjacent to the marina.
Yeah, the main concern is car parking and traffic access, yes.
Can you clarify for me, you said that you, that the Bell Reed Yacht Club has had no direct deliberation with the developer?
It's my understanding, I've been involved in, in a lot of the, what's going on, my understanding is we've had no direct contact. We've, we've, we've been talking to council officers, Crown, state government people, and the mayor and other organ and so forth, over two to about three years, and, and our aim is to be cooperative to allow the development to go ahead, but we don't want to have any interest in it.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I need clarification from an officer in council, am I able to do that? Over, over a particular matter, in relation to the car parking, and you said you had intentions to expand your car parking, did you have, do you have the capacity to do that, have you got the, the land there that was yours to actually consider that in first place?
We, we've planned negotiations with the Crown for several years, as part of this complete development, and we can envisage the gravel between Mr. Mayor and the Yacht
Yeah, that, yeah, I am envisaging that, that, yes, I am envisaging that, but I'm, I'm just questioning whether you had the capacity to actually consider that as part of your expansion project?
Our understanding from the Crown is we're going to release over the half of that area which is the boundary of the hotel garden and that is required under our development plan. You would probably understand the way that on a sailing day, especially the winter evening, that gravelly car park is out of the crown and ready and you're losing half that to the other. So we can't afford to lose that.
Just in relation to your long-term experience with the yacht club, this development is proposing a ferry wharf adjacent to it. What would you say would be, how would a ferry coming in around the boat in any way interfere with that proposed?
And you just clarify that the application does include it forces a future, it's very term. And that would be a separate question?
My honour. Still an interesting question.
Thank you very much. At this stage, we need to formally consider the issue. And so I invite a proposal for us to debate prior to voting on the application. Does the recommendation or speak to the motion or the time?
Stand to support the officer's recommendation. Within the context of it, I find that the staff have worked diligently to tie and set a development into a very small piece of land. There has been a long-term strategy for development for the community in this area and I support the fact that this development will provide pathway of those future development plans that we have.
Mr. Mayor, we've heard here tonight that the actual concept of this development needed to create a smaller footprint as possible with the constraints of the site. And the developer has indicated that that is what they've attempted to do. So if we're looking at the actual reason behind the development, we can see that it needed to occupy a certain number of floors, it needed to occupy a certain amount of space. Kangaroo Bay as a development, everybody's been crying out, crying out for something to happen on the eastern shore that is going to be some significance. This concept represents that significance. It's of a benefit to the majority of people on the eastern shore and will also provide an alternate social scene for other people from the western shore and it's hopefully going to join us together in that respect. We've heard here tonight that even if it was a two-storey development, which would be not even need any discretion, it would result in loss of youth. We've heard that we, and we know that from the conditions that the materials use, there'll be a full schedule of what will need to be to prevent glare and to prevent any offence from the materials used. The design of the building has cased it for the concept as I've said before. And the further uses of the concept and the development are needed, as I stated earlier, to enable this whole thing to be viable. So there are a number of add-ons in addition to training school and addition to the hotel development that actually need a developer to be able to say, well, look, I can make this work. I mean, it's all very well to come up with concepts, but you can't make it work unless you're getting the finance through. This development will no doubt drive the consideration of a proper long-term parking infrastructure or a multi-story facility for parking because there will be added, added commercial activities, there'll be added foot traffic, there'll be added vehicles through this area and the whole area will be totally revitalized. From a Bell Reef Yacht Club point of view, the issues of access and the issues of car parking will be addressed within this concept as well. The, the presence of Bell Reef Yacht Club does not get ignored. In fact, it's actually quite part of this whole consideration. And I know around the table, we have considered bearing in mind what is beneficial for that club. And this development actually and the access is the best concept for that. We had this within our notes and we've all seen the notes that there are a number of reasons why this development is very good for Clarence. And we need something iconic, we need something that's really special. But before us in consideration, we've had a number of conditions, we've had a number. And I think that as council has presented this tonight, that it is worthy of our acceptance as a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, it's interesting that a comment I made earlier in the presentation was about amenity. And I read the definition out and it's all there, it's in the SIPs, the Clarens' Intimate Planning Scheme. And it does, in my view, address a number of factors which are covered in that section of the planning scheme, which can address bulk, scale, size, and that can impact upon the lifestyle, amenity, and also what a visual outlook can entail. I understand what the planner mentioned earlier, that the whole process within amenity, I believe there is that definition which can enable people to say that my lifestyle is going to be severely or detrimental to my lifestyle because of this five-story building. It's interesting to note that on page thirty-seven of the officer's report, and I quote, "The rooftop garden is contained within the roof space itself as viewed from Cambridge Road and therefore contending that the building is five stories and not four stories is irrelevant." So in actual fact, we have been told it's five stories. Within the five stories is the rooftop and there's no doubt about that. It's a five-story development and that has also, and that has been acknowledged within there. The other point I want to make is in relation to the Kangaroo Bay urban design strategy and the concept master plan, and which provided the basis for formulating the scheme provisions and as such does not hold any statutory weight, any statutory weight in assessing this development application. So we have this plan and we have the different zones. We have the boulevard, which is one zone, we have the marina and wharf, another, and the village. Four zones. And within that planning scheme, it spells out, and it's, I'm quoting now from thirty-five, four point two on building height, "Buildings are acceptable solutions. Buildings are not to exceed two stories in height at the frontage to a public road." That's the acceptable solutions. And both buildings under the proposal, one and two, exceed those stories. They exceed two stories. So we've established that in the wharf precinct, we have a five-story building on the Cambridge Road which is causing a lot of angst and concern to residents amid the opposite. The buffer between the building and their properties is not, as is being quoted in here, of being twenty-five metres and also the road width. It's substantially reduced and therefore I would pretend that it's not a buffer in that strict sense. There's also been discussed tonight, and it was raised by the planner, this question about architectural response. Now, I didn't get a direct answer, but I asked the question that if an eight-story building was built in the wharf precinct, remember there's four precincts, in the wharf precinct, if it was of an architectural response compliant or cognizant, not beg your pardon, of its location and visual importance, then there's nothing stopping, there's nothing stopping a ten-story building with an architectural response, which could have all of this lovely paraphernalia, et cetera, et cetera, being built on the site. And I didn't get a direct answer because I know that if the architectural response and the condition and its other comments of its cognizance, of its location and visual importance, that you can have a building of X number of metres. And five metres has just been an example of where the scheme has, and the performance criteria says the zone purpose, targets, local objectives and desires do not specify any particular height, height for the application site. And that's quite right, that's quite true. You can put a ten-story building there. If it meets this legally proposal, which he says, and I quote, "The development proposal provides a considered response to the urban design principles and site development intentions for Kangaroo Bay." And that's that. And that's not in law, it's not the statutory process. We have to go to SIPs and identify as to whether or not it's appropriate.
Thank you, Smith. This is a very complex development application on my plan, on my map check, on my authority on developing an operating tourist information. I do know that the development, this complex is never going to automatically be over. It must be an discretionary allowance. Does the city come to need this type of development? I believe it is. It's Kangaroo Bay location, it's a year or two. This is a design and architecture requirement. But I do know the officers are recommending approval. I do know the architecture criteria. I do know when the opponents are already anticipating revenue, capital, mortgage, anticipating pay through between finance costs, etc., then they will only continue if this equation is positive as a result. But the terms of this design and preparation, the ones required for this development to be viable as a tourist accommodation development and a training society, if it were not viable, it would not be settled. It's our responsibility to weigh all the information we have, which may exist based on that information. As I said, we're not planning our effort for this accommodation experts. We must rely on our council officers by effort and planning to assess this and give it a vote. I acknowledge car parking is a concern in terms of Bell Reef Yacht Club. But I do know on page forty-one, part of that, the comment from the officer is, "If your access to Bell Reef Yacht Club through the development park is specified by a subsidy group and will eventually be established by the end of this year, this way a major issue for access can go away." One, one, two, three, four, five. Overall, I support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The viability of the development is a consideration for the developer in what they decide to perform. It is not a related planning consideration. But however, there can be times when compliance with the scheme and the viability of development is irrelevant. It's for the developer to weigh that up and report and develop that they're applying to the scheme. Now, compliance with the scheme means that, first of all, they either attempt to comply with the resolutions or where they cannot comply with the acceptable solution, they then try to comply with the relevant performance criteria related to that consideration. That's how the scheme works. There are two options when both the acceptable solution and relative performance criteria cannot meet in a development. One of them is to review developments, the other is to look at whether there are appropriate restrictions that can be placed on the development subject and to make sure they're met. And if the development then chooses to accept those conditions, it could hold the scheme. Now, I've gone through the officer's report in all its detail. And as far as I'm concerned, I understand that there are places where, in the scheme, where the original proposal did not meet with the scheme. However, in those cases, the officers have put forward recommendations and the developer the proponent accepted solutions that therefore make the development compliant. It tends to mean that the candidates, and there are a number listed from representatives, but the two major candidates appear to have a major car parking part. The officer's acknowledgement of great detail in working out how many car parking spaces are required for this development. When it comes to the proponent not meeting the car parking requirement, we do have the option of accepting a cash in lieu contribution. But if we accept the cash in lieu contribution, it's not for the developer to explain, dictate how that's going to meet the requirement, that then come in order for the council. It's not something that factors into our acceptance of our development. The other issue has been in relation to height. And I understand that has raised issues with lots of views and also with car privacy. Privacy has been accepted as an issue by the officers, but they have recommended the conditions that development that addresses that issue. In relation to lots of views, and responding to my question, I know that the planning officers would agree with me. The tribunal was never actually tested for lots of views as a remedy issue. That's a planning principle that's actually established throughout Australia with lots of views as well. A planning consideration, it can actually be something that goes into setting playing standard within the scheme, but it's not a, it's not a new consideration. In terms of Autumn James's contribution, knowing the officers did not accept that the building was high story requirement, they can actually provide a view as to whether it was four or five stories because what they've explained is not relevant. What is relevant is the performance criteria is about that architectural process. And that can be a fairly objective thing to look at, which is why we, you know, have engaged the services of one expert in legal providing. So I have no doubt that there are, you know, very good concerns by the representatives of great representation that have. But in terms of our planning scheme, in terms of compliance, compliance scheme, in terms of our assessment, I cannot see any reason from a planning approach to reject this tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Every time we have a development in Bell Reef, car parking comes up as an issue. Doesn't matter whether it's a doctor's surgery or the key redevelopment or there's always an issue. Now, people who park round there regularly know it's difficult. We have, however, a consistent policy that we've applied in this chamber of taking cash in lieu where there was insufficient car parking spaces. And we've used that. Percy Street, what we've done in Percy Street where we got rid of the old building and put in more car park spaces. My understanding is that there is currently some one hundred and forty thousand dollars in the car parking reserve for this area along with eight hundred and forty thousand, assuming this gets checked at night. That actually won't build a multi-story car park, but it'll go a long way towards building a multi-story car park, which would alleviate problems not only for the hotel, but for the yacht club and for the residents in the area of how trouble parking. As several of the other old men have mentioned, yes, there are other issues with this, but I like and believe the planners have done a very good job in listing all those, considering all of those. And I will be supporting the planner's recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor.
I, the other speaker, so I do support the motion, but I do have reservations about some of the objectives. Complaints about size, which I've made. some of the objectives, complaints about size, which I've mentioned before. I've always said we need some accommodation on the eastern shore, but I didn't think that was going to involve a tape training school as well, because I think, you know, if that was relocated somewhere else, the size of the building could be reduced and we wouldn't have had any objection at all. As Alderman Chong said, parking has always been an issue. We've discussed parking now for, I don't know, two, three years in Belgrade and Rosney. So that's always going to be an issue to this council final results. This is a development which, you know, I support. I'm not jumping over the moon about it because I think that there is some things that probably could have been done differently because this is a very vital area. But I think Alderman Chong said, you know, under the planning scheme, we understand why the officer's recommendation is as such. And, you know, really, I think we've got to support it, but I do think there are some flaws that probably could have been handled.
I think it's a high-quality development of Kangaroo Bay. Kangaroo Bay is crying out, right quality development. It's going to be a great asset to the community. I know there are certain problems regarding parking and relocation of the training school. I would have liked to see the training school side of town or else. All the comments that we're not present on viability, but the point is if we top and touch the plans to such an extent that viability is a concept which is not considered, the proponents will just walk away from it. I think cash and move for parking, I think parking is quite a problem because it's going to be for face short. But cash and move will go as long. Chong said, on the way to helping us develop a, or to recover, in recent vicinity of there.
Mr. Mayor, we've heard tonight a number of deputations from residents who are concerned in relation to loss of amenities, loss of views and that thing. And they are very important to those particular people. However, we've also heard from the applicant in relation to the strategic nature of this development. And I think it's important to keep in mind that in representations that we received, that there were several representatives who actually were in favour of this development and who believed that it would be a major attraction, it would create employment, it was visually very pleasing, and that it was imaginative and innovative. So we have those two aspects, looking at it strategically and looking at some very valid concerns. From my perspective as the Chair of the Bicycle Committee, the Bicycle Committee, which is a lovely name, all of the representations that were received in relation to the Clarence Wharf Shore Trail and the cycling and pedestrian issues appear to actually have been taken on board by the developer and that they are going to work very closely with council in relation to actually meeting those needs that were seen by Cycling South and Bike Network Tasmania and our committee. So I'm very pleased to see that the applicant, the developer, is actually working very closely with our council, all officials and members of the community who have concerns. I would like to actually see between now and hopefully the development occurring, that there is also some consultation in relation to those valid issues about the concerns of the immediate residents. It appears that the developer has not actually had direct consultation with both those by residents and also Belgrade Yacht Club. I understand that council and Crown, et cetera, have had consultations with the yacht club, but perhaps there is room for negotiation discussions, explanation, thorough explanation in relation to what this development will actually look like and the concept of the development. So I do urge the developer to actually do that consultation and negotiation with the immediate residents. I believe this application addresses a long-term need and some strategies within our council direction. From a social point of view, I believe that it does create better community and social outcomes with regards to the Wharf Shore Trail. And hopefully in the future, it will link to other establishments that create broader outdoor eating facilities or accommodation in a tourist scene. Economically, I think that this gives us a good foundation to set up this whole area with new jobs and development that create and revitalize that section of our city. We are badly lacking in the promotion of extending a city, and I always have high hopes of having a second Salamanca Place. However, with relation to comments about elevation density, from my perspective, a planning perspective, I believe that these only relate to the residential areas in the context of that we put in the report and not to this particular area, which is a sufficient area zone. And it was designed this way to be able to allow particular sections to be able to be given the ability to develop in such a way that it created a viable economic outcome for any developer in the area. The current application, again, it was stated, does not create any solar compromise, however, there could be a little bit of further investigation on the needs of residents and their privacy. And I believe those can be individually addressed. And also maybe some consideration of trying to alleviate a better views through to the border. However, I do think that it's representative, the concerns have been considered, and that such a small site really needs to have a certain amount of certainty and that our special zone created that situation. I think it will be an iconic development that will give Clarence something to build on and redevelop our city the way we have it in the city that it was going. And I recommend the staff on there work with this application and seek support of council.
Thank you. So the motion for Chair, this officer's recommendation to approve the open mining facility, all of the others, are you back to the level of play?